West Covina Faith Community Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance from Councilmember Lane. Please rise. Kelly.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you that you are the source of wisdom. And Father, tonight, Lord, we ask you to bring your wisdom here to this meeting, Lord. We thank you for the city council. We thank you for their service, Lord, not just to the city of West Covina, but all of our community. Father, we ask that you would give them wisdom in their deliberations and discussions tonight. And, Lord, we do pray your blessing upon our city. Thank you, God, for what you're doing and how you are blessing us. Continue to let your blessings be poured out upon us, and we thank you for this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, we didn't have a closed session tonight, so there's nothing to report out. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll start with our presentations. Okay, we have a special presentation tonight. Every year, in November, we induct a class into our West Covina Walk of Fame up at the Big League Dreams Project. This is, I think, the third year that we will have inductees, and we always are looking for funding sources to support the plaques that we put in the ground to honor the athletes. And one of the organizations that's always been there for this event is the Corey Lidle Foundation, and I'd like to have Christopher Lidle, please come forward. The Corey Lidle Foundation is probably one of the most generous groups in our city. Your family, Christopher, gives a lot of money to some good causes, and we want to thank you for that. So I know you have a check to present to us for $1,000, so on behalf of the city, would you like to say a few words before you present it?
No.
Let me say it for you, okay? We're honored that your family is donating $1,000 for this cause. It's really for, to remember a lot of good athletes, and we thank you for that. Let's get a handshake, and I think I have it. Thank you, the whole family came out, and we appreciate that, so I'll give that to you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call forward our Fire Chief Paul Segala. This is National Fire Prevention Week, and Paul is going to present, or actually, I'm going to present him a proclamation, which I'd like to say a few words about it first.
I would, Mayor. Thank you very much, and we appreciate that the city is proclaiming Fire Prevention Week next week. It's that one time of the year that we really push home the message, and this year, the theme is protect your family from fire, and seems fitting for our community, such a family-oriented community, to embrace that. And so it's our opportunity to flood the city with information on that, and we have on the Westfield sign that message being sent across, so everybody on the freeway outside of the city who passes through will also get to see that. You know, tragically, every, almost every home in the United States has a smoke alarm installed, but about two-thirds of the people who die in home fires don't have a working smoke alarm. So one of the messages that we truly want to send is to test those smoke alarms and to make sure they're in proper working order, and we're always willing to help out with that. If any citizens need that, they can call the Fire Department, we'll help. And so, once again, we appreciate the opportunity to be proclaimed by the city that this will be Fire Prevention Week, and we'll partner with the National Fire Protection Association to promote that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Chairman Herrford.
Here.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chairman Tui. Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Okay, let me just say something along the lines of the Fire Prevention Week. You know, we, a lot of times, do these proclamations and things, and we don't think too much of them, but over the weekend, I think it was actually the week before, I had a lot of relatives from out of town, and I had a couple of nieces from Rhode Island, and two of them could swim, no, one of them could swim and the other two couldn't, and I happened to be in our spa, and we were playing, the kids were on a step that was above, you know, they could all stand on it, and I was playing with one of the kids, and low and behold, one of the other ones fell in and went under twice, but we rescued her, and she was fine. But you just have to watch so closely all the time, so when we do these proclamations, sometimes we think, you know, that may not pertain to me or whatever, but just take a few minutes, check your smoke alarm, and watch out for, you know, your young kids in the house, if you have a pool or something, too, so. Okay, with that, we'll go on to Oral Communications, and we'll start with Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Last month, there was an article in the Pasadena Star about Bob's towing being suspended from the Highway Patrol. They were accused of taking things out of cars they towed, so the Highway Patrol opened an investigation into the matter. These allegations led to the Highway Patrol suspending Bob's from doing any towing with them on the freeways. What I would like to know, are our standards any lower than the Highway Patrol? When there's a contractor that works for our city that deals with our residents, they should be held to a high standard. If this contractor is taking things out of cars they are towing, then this isn't the kind of contractors we want representing West Covina. I would hope this council looks into this matter and comes back to the next meeting to let us know what you're going to do about it. At the last meeting, I asked for a written report on the gang and crime problem we were supposed to be having in our city, according to a letter that was sent out to some residents stating that fact. The chief did address this matter, but at the same time, this kind of misleading information being sent out to the residents at election time to try and get votes isn't the kind of leadership we need. I would hope that the candidates that are running for council sticks to the facts and stops making misleading and scare tactics just to get votes, and I would like to know if we'll be able to get that written report sometime. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so I'm not sure what you were asking for, but we'll make sure he gets a report. Okay. Okay, Sharon Neely.
I'm Sharon Neely. I'm the Deputy Executive Director at Southern California Association of Governments. Good evening, council members. I'll be very brief. I know your item to oppose, the San Jose Truck Freight Corridor, is on your agenda tonight to oppose, and we would just ask, and I'm sure that you're going to go ahead and do that, but we would just ask if you would give us the benefit of meeting with you or your staff, or also inviting you to the October 20th, 4:00 p.m., San Gabriel Valley Transportation Committee meeting to discuss in more detail some of the misinformation that's being spread about, what the real facts are. And I think one of the things to just keep in mind is, one, we're just in the discussion stages with all the cities. We have plenty of outreach to meet with your community residents. Given the severe economic situation all of our cities are in, you know, understanding how much warehousing and logistics support is provided in San Gabriel Valley in terms of your economic base, which is 34% of your total jobs, 204,000 jobs are related to logistics, and many of your residents work in adjacent warehousing and logistics in San Gabriel Valley. Any of us traveling, and I live in San Gabriel Valley, know that the 60 is untenable now. Well, imagine what it's going to be in 2035. So what we would like to do is just continue to work with you, as well as the other cities, on what can we do to keep freight, warehousing, logistics, and manufacturing in San Gabriel Valley. So we'll follow up with your staff about potential additional information, and I thank you for your kind attention tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes Oral Communications. We will move on to, let's recognize, Councilmember Tui is here. Move on to the Consent Calendar. Is there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? I personally would like to have Item 5 pulled and Item 8. If we have no others, we'll make, have a motion to approve all the other items.
So moved.
Moved by Armbrust.
Second.
Second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 5, Chief, can you come down and give us a little bit of a brief explanation? I think the council is fully aware of the issue, but I think the residents, this is something that has been on the news the last couple nights, and is a huge threat to the city of West Covina and every other city in the state of California. Our letter tonight is requesting the governor to fully fund these prisoners that are going to be released to the county jails and to our neighborhoods, and so can you give us a little history of the whole issue, when it, back in May or June when the legislature adopted it?
Okay. In order to save money, the governor decided to, and the legislature, to switch control and monitoring of parolees to the local level, and at the time, the governor promised that local agencies would be fully reimbursed. At present, not only are we not fully reimbursed, we're not halfway, not even 50% reimbursed, and it's a concern to every police chief in the state of California. Parolees probably don't get the attention in the mass media, say, as sex offenders do, you know? Sex offenders are a big problem, they get a lot of attention, but parolees are every bit is serious a problem. We know that parolees, 70% of them will commit a felony and be back in prison within five years, and because they're educated criminals, typically they commit between nine and 11 felonies before we catch them and put them away. So we closely monitor the number of felons, or the number of parolees released in this community right now. We have about 240 of them. We get weekly updates, and without having state parole monitor those offenders, it just puts us at a tremendous disadvantage. Both Sheriff Baca, Chief Charlie Beck, LA County Police Chiefs Association view this really as a coming storm that we're not, right now, equipped to handle. So it is a real problem. We don't have the staff or the finances to address it adequately, and neither does the sheriff's. We're not going to be able to rely on the sheriff to step in and help us out. So it's a very serious problem, and this letter is well timed and it's important.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to get a, Councilmember Tui.
I agree with what you're saying. I knew that. I thought it'd sound better if I wasn't amplified. I agree with what the chief's saying. This is a problem we're having. The state said they took away our redevelopment agency to fund public safety. Then they send all the prisoners down to our level, or the, some is early release, some are sending the prisoners down to the county jail system, but they're, they're cutting and taking away the redevelopment money to pay for public safety, yet none of the money's staying here locally, like the governor. Apparently, you can't trust him when his lips are moving, and that's what's happening here. And what's amazing with what's being done here, and what the chief just said, sex offenders and arsonists have to register, but murderers don't. So if they release a murderer after he served his or her time, they don't have to register, so they could be living right next door to you, and they don't have to register. It seems like some of those type of crimes are so hideous that they should have permanent and registration requirements for the rest of their life for what they did, and they don't, and that's what's scary with what's going on, as long as the state, the state legislature and the governor keep on dumping all their problems onto local government and then take all our money to pay for their lavish lifestyle. That stuff has got it in.
Okay, any other comments? I think it was beneficial to have the chief educate everybody a little bit more on that issue. It is a huge issue. It is something that we won't see right away, but it's going to infect public safety in the entire state of California within the next few months, probably, so we're going to be addressing that. Anyway, we have a motion. This is a letter requesting the governor to fully fund the Public Safety Realignment Program, which is the release of these prisoners.
So moved.
Moved by Sanderson.
Second.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 8 is the opposition to the San Jose Creek Truck Route. Might be beneficial to have a brief staff report on this, too.
I'll have Mr. Yatzi do that report, then.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Herrford and council members. The San Jose Creek Truck Route involves a plan to build an elevated structure along San Jose Creek, which goes between the 60 and the railroad tracks and Valley Boulevard, so it's somewhat close to the southern boundary of the city. The truck route would be elevated in the air approximately 40 feet, and City Diamond Bar has asked the city to join them and Walnut and South El Monte at this time to oppose this route, and a number of issues they've brought up. One issue being that other routes should still be considered, such as Route 91. There is a concern also because this involves construction to the LA County Flood Control Channel, that LA County's not yet bought into this plan, and I think the feeling is just that it's too early and the project's not ready to be put on the 2012 Regional Transportation Plan without further study.
Okay, thank you. I asked for it to be pulled because I do have some concerns about the elevated roadway, but I think number one on my list of questions to ask Sharon, basically to go back to SCAG with, is when we did the Alameda East Corridor, the intent of that program was to have the trucks go into LA, be put on trains, the cargo, and then to be taken out to the warehouses in the Inland Empire and other areas. And from what I understand, and maybe I'm wrong, but I only, I think that the cost to put the trucks on the, to put them on the rail line going from Alameda to downtown LA is too expensive, and a lot of truck companies won't use that. So it's proven to be a plan that was put forth, and it was going to be a solution to all of our traffic with trucks, and it really isn't working, so I would like to see that maybe figured out first before we look at other options. So that would be my concern, is what's going on with the Alameda East Corridor. Councilmember Tui.
My concern, Sharon, you can take back, is it looks like one of the primary dumping of the trucks that would use that route would be Valley Boulevard will become the truck corridor in the city of West Covina, and that deeply concerns us. We have, that is our boundary for the most part, and that, to me, looks like one of the main access points where you come off and start and do this, and I just, I don't understand. I agree with Steve. I've been here long enough to realize when the Alameda Corridor was planned and studied, we were supposed to, to build trucking facilities in Ontario, Lancaster, in the outskirts, up in Victorville, and the things were, the cargo was supposed to be taken by train out there and then loaded up and taken from there, where it seems like the thing is still used. We've spent $500 million on Alameda Corridor East projects, and we're not relieving the problem in which we were supposed to be relieving, and to put a truck corridor right next to the Alameda East Corridor, they were supposed to be one or the other, not both. It's, it's kind of ironic that they're side by side in this particular map, so we have a truck driving alongside of the cargo. I don't know why the truck's driving next door to the train. It's kind of different, but I have concerns, too, and especially the impacts that could be over there, because eventually, based on this currently, right now, it would dump off into Grand Avenue, and I don't know. I have concerns at this time, too, and I, I don't know who's really supportive of this. I understand why SCAG sometimes is supportive of this, because a lot of these generate study fees to employ a lot of people, but I don't know if it's reality and if it benefits the residents.
Okay, any other, Councilmember Armbrust.
What time was the meeting, on the 20th? Four o'clock, Councilmember. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion, or a resolution essentially, to oppose the San Jose Creek Truck Route. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Sanderson.
Second.
Second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Okay, we'll just go on to public hearings. First hearing is on our 2011 Congestion Management Program. Item 10 on the agenda. This matter set for public hearing consists of finding the city to be in conformance with the Congestion Management Program and adopting the Congestion Management Program Local Development Report. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Okay, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the 2011 CMP and the Local Development Report. First, we'll have a presentation by our staff, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, then those opposed. Finally, those in favor will have the ability to rebut those in opposition. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report.
Thank you. As part of the Congestion Management Program, the city is required to annually submit statistics on development activity to the MTA. The reporting form is attached on Attachment 2 in the report, and it indicates the demolition and construction activity from June 2010 to May 2011. Permits for residential construction were issued for two single-family homes and the 65-unit West Covina Senior Villas II project. Permits for new commercial construction include the addition going on at the Westfield Mall, which includes Nordstrom, Rack, and the Gold's Gym, and the new construction at McIntyre Square. Staff is recommending approval of the attached resolution.
Okay. Any questions of staff by the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our public testimony portion. I have no cards. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing and move to council discussion. Any discussion? Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Lane. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Code Amendment Number 11-4. It's item 11 on the agenda. This matter set for public hearing consists of an amendment to Chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code related to tattooing. City Clerk, will you verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on Code Amendment Number 11-4. There will first be the presentation, the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor and those opposed. Finally, and those in favor will have an opportunity to give rebuttal to the testimony of the opposition. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report as well.
This is a code amendment for tattooing. In September of 2010, the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals determined that a prohibition on tattooing was facially unconstitutional in a court case involving the city of Hermosa Beach. They found that tattooing was protected by First Amendment rights, freedom of speech. Based on that legal decision, the Planning Commission initiated a code amendment, and they initiated that on March 22, 2011. The municipal code currently does not allow tattooing. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the code amendment on July 26, 2011, at which time the Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment to the city council. Go to the second slide for me. The proposed code changes include the following. Tattooing would be allowed in the regional commercial, service commercial, and manufacturing zones with the approval of a conditional use permit. Tattooing would be allowed in conjunction with permanent makeup and body piercing uses. Also require tattooing businesses to be 300 feet from residential uses or zones, religious facilities, public parks, or educational institutions used by minors. Next, it would require separation between tattooing uses of 1,500 feet. Would also prohibit the operation of tattooing businesses between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. It would prohibit temporary use or mobile tattooing uses or events, and it would define parking requirements as the same as retail parking standards. It would require compliance with the LA County Body Art Standards, and it would require the, an applicant to obtain a business license. Go ahead and bring up the map. Has been some questions asked of me about the zoning for the city. This is a zoning map of the northern portion of the city, which has most of the locations where we have M1, RC, and SC zones, M1 being manufacturing. The manufacturing area in the city is found up here in the very far northwest corner of the city. It's all, it's all in that area. Areas that are zoned for regional commercial uses are kind of the brownish colored uses, and I'll start over here on the east side, Restaurant Row, the super block around Eastland Shopping Center, and then the area that we call the Central Business District, starting over by the Lakes Entertainment District, including the Foothill Transit Building, and then the Westfield Shopping Center and the other kind of businesses that are in that block as well, and then the area, lastly, the area between Cameron and West Covina Parkway, it's across from the Civic Center. That's a regional commercial. The service commercial zone sites in the city are the bright red ones, and those are kind of spread around at different areas. This is the West Covina Village Shopping Center on North Azusa, that's zone service commercial. The Auto Row area is zone service commercial. The Nissan dealership in the Citrus Grove Shopping Center on Workman are zone service commercial, and as well as right across the street were Sidners and Jiffy Loop and some other uses up there, that's zone service commercial. There's also the Heights, that's zone service commercial, and then some of the areas on Glendora, including the northern Glendora area right up against West Covina Parkway, that includes the Samantha Court Shopping Center, the area around where Weenison and Sol is, and the old Osh Building. Also, the bowling alley and the, the service, or the storage facility behind it are zone service commercial, as well as the Vons and CVS stores on the corner of Cameron and Glendora. So there's other smaller sites that are also zoned that on South Glendora and as well as on North Azusa. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed code amendment, and be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public testimony portion of the hearing. First, we'll hear from those in favor. We have a card from Steve Potts.
My name's Steve Potts. I'd like to thank staff and city council for hearing this, and I look forward to y'all being in favor of this. I think it's a good thing for the city. I think that tattooing has no longer been what tattooing has been in the past. It brings good art and entertainment to the city, and it expands a business that has since, has before now, not been allowed in the area, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Frank Ferrero.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I just wanted to express that I'm in favor of this and have no complaints. I've been a citizen of West Covina forever, almost, and, and I give it a aye. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the cards. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, are there any in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve, number one, but I have some corrections, or not corrections, amendments I'd like to make. Number one, I would like to make sure the zoning does not include SC. I'm comfortable with regional commercial and manufacturing, so for it to be including RC and M1 zones only, and I'm, I'm okay with a thousand-square-foot minimum store. They had a particular use. I mean, sometimes I don't think people understand, out there, the size of the stores is normally difficult, so I'm okay with a thousand square feet also, and, and that's on page, page six of our report, the thousand-square-feet size of the store and the regional commercial, I just added, but I'm okay with that. After that, I understand we're complying with what Hermosa Beach did. If we didn't do this, we're subject to having them come in, so I'm willing to move forward tonight with those two corrections, and I'll make a motion to approve thousand-square-foot minimum-sized store, regional commercial, and manufacturing, one zones.
Second.
Okay, so we're eliminating the service commercial?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Okay, that's item 11. Move on to item 12, another public hearing. This is on the Urgency Ordinance extending the moratorium to create an equestrian overlay zone on single-family properties on the north side of Vanderhoof Drive between 2633 and 2807 Vanderhoof Drive and providing a progress report on the proposed code amendment. 2633 and 2807 Vanderhoof Drive and providing a progress report on the proposed code amendment and zone change. This is just to extend the time period. We're not going to be hearing the hearing. I'm sorry.
I need to leave.
Oh, yeah.
I can't be a part of this.
Okay, we will stop right now. If you were here last meeting, we tossed a coin because there's two councilmembers that live in the area and had a conflict of interest. And Councilwoman Sanderson, I believe, won the coin toss to stay. So, Councilwoman Armbrust will be leaving.
Thank you. Sorry, I do have a conflict.
Mr. Mayor, while she's on her way out, we should announce that Shelley also had a conflict of interest because she has a residence in that area. And, but we did, we did the flip of the coin, and so that she is now qualified to continue acting on this matter so long as it becomes before the council.
Yeah, and the reason why you have to have four is it's an urgency ordinance.
Correct. You have to have at least four votes.
Okay. She's gone. Okay, the matter set for public hearing. I believe I read that. It's properties on the north side between 2633 and 2807 Vanderhoof. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
That's verified.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the moratorium extension. There will first be the presentation, the staff report. Then, we shall hear from those in favor and then those opposed. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report.
Thank you. A moratorium ordinance was adopted at the city council meeting of September 6, 2011. The moratorium prohibits the construction of guest houses or other similar types of habitable space, and also sports courts, tennis courts, swimming pools, and other similar improvements that could be distressing to horses and create a danger to riders. The subject properties are 10 single-family lots on the north side of Vanderhoof Drive. The original moratorium was approved for 45 days, and that will expire in mid-October. Staff is recommending the adoption of an ordinance tonight to extend the moratorium for an additional 10 months and 15 days that would last until September 6, 2012. The purpose of the moratorium is to allow staff to process a code amendment to create an equestrian overlay zone and also to process a zone change. Staff is currently researching other city standards to determine what standards might be appropriate, and a study session to introduce the concept to the Planning Commission is scheduled for October 11. Following the creation of a draft code amendment and zone change, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Commission with subsequent hearing to be held by city council. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, Councilmember Tui.
I was just trying to get a hold of Chris Freeland for something else.
Okay, that, any other comments, questions from the council? We'll move on to public testimony. I don't have any cards. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Lloyd Johnson?
Good evening, good day, ma'am. I'm sorry I didn't fill out a card. But, you know, I would just like to ask this council, why are we bidding one residence against another? You know, the residents also that live up there that have their homes up in that area, why don't they have a right if they want to put a swimming pool in, as long as it's within the code to put a swimming pool in? We're favoring one group of residents against another group, and I really don't think that's right. I mean, if I buy a piece of property up there just because I don't care for horses, and that doesn't say I don't, but I'm saying if I didn't, what you do, you're punishing me on my property for putting something in there that I do love, that I'm not allowed to do because of certain few people. I think what we ought to just look at, if they can put a swimming pool in, if they can put something in, it can be blinded from the horses to come around it, but it won't be bothering them. They can build some kind of a wall. They should be able to put some kind of fence up, so it's not bothering the horses. We should be able to do something like that. But far as telling the residents that live up there, just because your neighbor or your neighbor down the street owns horses, they're being punished for it. And I do not think that is right. So, I hope this council considers that, find if we can go a different way, if we can look into it, instead of saying, no, you can't do it. If you can build some kind of a blind wall or something that keeps from scaring the horses. I understand that when they go by them. But we need to compromise with those who have and those who don't have. I hope you look at this before you decide.
Yeah, Lloyd, just so you're clear, we're not doing anything tonight.
No, I know.
This is just an extension. But then, to answer your question, that's exactly why we're looking at it, because if you have people building structures without the thought of horses there, then you're going to scare the horses. And so, it's really about the animals and protecting the animals. Councilmember Tui?
If they're done, I'm ready to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Tui.
To address some of that, Lloyd, a part of my concern likewise, a resident who buys the property with intention to do horse properties, once someone builds a guest house back there, they can no longer have horses. So, they've lost their right. So, it's one of those unique things. It's one of our only areas, we have very few areas where you can have horses, and those properties happen to be divided in two different sections, where they have an upper half where they can have swimming pools and other type facilities, and then they have the lower half, which has been dedicated to horses. The upper half of the property is not the ones that are in question. But if someone has a horse downstairs next door and you build a guest house, those horses can't stay there anymore, because now you're within 50 feet of a residence. So, they have to get rid of their horses. So, I'm saying pools and all those other amenities you're talking about are allowed on their upper plateaus, because most of those people, and I don't know if all the residents know, have like an acre, acre and a half property. So, they have a large upstairs plateau where they have their living quarters, and then it drops down like 30 or 40 feet, and they have the flat area where they have their horses. And that's why I would consider this. I am taking into account that issue, because I would be concerned there. But likewise, you know, you get into a chicken or the egg thing, everyone potentially can lose their property rights. And it was horse property when they bought there with those type of restrictions. You can do other things down there, but the question, I think, more is with living quarters. That was one of the main questions that have come up, because someone wants to build a large guest house down there, which we normally don't even allow guest homes that are separate from the residents like that.
Councilor, city manager?
Just add one more point on what you've added, and you're both absolutely correct on the intentions of this moratorium. But we also have a service road that is shared as a bridle trail, and to the extent you get residential uses on the lower level and they start using that as a access road, you're going to have immediate conflicts with the animals and the vehicles that are on that unimproved surface.
And these are all things that will be explored over the next six months, maybe? I don't know. Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I, you know, from my seat, I'm looking at it, and the property, you know, we don't have very much horse property left in West Covina. And, you know, if we can, like you were saying, you know, have things that, the swimming pools and things like that on the upper part, as Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Tui was saying. But I think this is to protect the animals that are down there and the living quarters. That would make it so it'd be more restrictive, and then the animals would eventually go away. This is just a small part of West Covina that, you know, there's certain areas, and it's part of our heritage. So, it's, we just want to protect those horses, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Sanderson?
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly say that most of the houses do have pools in that area. And just for an FYI, there is approximately 30 horses down there currently, and that's fantastic. And we're, you know, I think that that's a good thing, and we want to keep that. So, I appreciate everybody's comments and the community in being involved.
Okay, so we have an ordinance to extend the moratorium, and do we have a motion to adopt?
You'll move.
Moved by Sanderson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four oh. Councilmember Tui.
Mr. Mayor, on the tattoo ordinance, because I couldn't find it, and then we were, and I forgot to ask the question. Does your footage kick in against the people that do the permanent tattoos for makeup? Or is that not part of the 1,500 feet? Because a lot of hair salons, even though I don't have eyebrows, because I'm bald and I don't have eyebrows either, I'm doing those type of tattoos. I didn't read it that way. I'm making sure that if I need to fix that today, that does not count the hair salons that do permanent makeup tattoos as a tattoo facility.
The permanent makeup is not a tattoo facility. Permanent makeup is a separate type of use.
So, that can be with inside. Because I'm saying, what happens based upon this, what Lloyd has said about the horses, what happens sometimes when you have this type of footage requirement in certain businesses, if a business moves in after the fact, does that mean that business now that was legally there, the tattoo parlor, is now not in compliance because an educational facility moved next door? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that. We have this prom in shopping centers. Churches are taking a lot of shopping centers, and that's not a problem. But the only place people can sell alcohol is at shopping centers. And if a church moves in there, then bans anyone from using that type of use there, it's turned our shopping centers where we can't get restaurants or grocery stores because of that. And we have to be sensitive. When you're moving inside out of your district and you're, you can go anywhere, and you go into a commercial district, make sure of that, because that's happened in other cities where a business opened up, a karate studio opened up, and then they say, well, that's a kid's thing. You can't do that now, even though it opened up after the fact. So, I just want to make sure how we would look at that prospectively.
Well, the separation, the 1,500-foot separation would be in effect, even if somebody operated, let's say there was somebody operating a permanent makeup, and they were within 500 feet of a tattoo, and that permanent makeup business wanted to transfer to, add tattooing onto the permanent makeup, they wouldn't be allowed to unless they found a location that was over 1,500 feet away from the other tattoo use.
I think my concern was more for the ones that tattoo parlors can't go near. There were uses, you mentioned, that they couldn't operate near. And if those moved in within the 1,500-foot footage, is the operator who was legally there in violation now?
And those distances are 300 feet, not 1,500.
Whatever it is.
They, and that, I think that religious facility is probably the only one that would likely happen, because the other ones are residences and parks. But it would create an, well, if it's 300 feet, they wouldn't be allowed to go in there. Well, it's already operating, so you're saying.
If they came in after.
It would become a non, if they came in afterwards, it would become a nonconforming use.
Okay.
Make sure. That's the answer.
That always got there.
The use that is, the sensitive use then becomes the nonconforming use. You don't prohibit the other uses from coming in within 300 feet. It works the other way around.
So, you can get your eyebrows now.
That's not funny.
We could keep going there. All right, let's move on to.
Lloyd and Steve made that comment.
AB 1234 Conference and Meeting Report. Any reports by anybody? Okay, seen.
We have a.
Any council reports?
It was already approved.
No reports? Okay, we have adjournments.
Excuse me, Mayor, do you ever get a candidate's phone?
I don't. I haven't heard anything. As a candidate, I haven't heard either, so.
I know, excuse me for interrupting, but I remember it was a big, a lot of, you guys.
Yeah, we haven't got anything.
I believe there's a request pending, but I don't think that's been finalized yet.
Okay.
From the league. Okay. Last I heard, it may be the 23rd, but I hadn't.
Have you heard anything?
The Legal Women Voters are trying to put it together still, like.
We made the facility available.
Sorry about that. The Legal Women Voters has contacted the city. City has offered our council chambers, and we believe the Legal Women Voters are still going to utilize it. I don't have the date off the top of my head.
23rd is the, we just got a notice for the Filipino Lions Club induction.
23rd is Sunday.
I thought it's the 20th.
So, it'd be the 20th, which would be a Thursday.
Okay. Anyway, we'll see where, when it falls. Okay. All right, we have some adjournments. First one is Ginny Rennie, the mother of Susan Rennie, and Walnut Mayor Nancy Traggers. Susan was a longtime resident of West Covina who helped immensely in closing the landfill and just a great lady. She works over at the School for the Deaf on Vincent, and her mother passed away, so we'll adjourn in her memory. Also, Betsy Christensen, the daughter of retired West Covina Police Corporal Gary Christensen. And our thoughts and prayers are with both the Rennies and Traggers and the Christensen families as we adjourn tonight's meeting and her memory.
I'll second.
Moved by me and seconded by Councilwoman Lane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.